I'm calling this meeting to order. First, I would like to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry. Thank you. The public session of this meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours. It can also be accessed via the CUNY website. Now to the business of the committee. Action items. Approval of the minutes of the committee on Facilities Planning, Construction and Management, meeting of June 6, 2016. Like a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Following our consideration of the resolutions being brought before you today, I will call upon Vice Chancellor Burdroom to give a report on the capital budget process for the upcoming year. Policy calendar, I shall move the first resolution which you have at your places and received in advance of today's meeting entitled, "One, New York City College of Technology: Execution of Lease Renewal for 25 Chapel Street, Part Ground Floor, Brooklyn, New York." This will request the General Counsel to execute a lease renewal on behalf of the New York City College of Technology for 21,000 rentable square feet at 25 Chapel Street, Part Ground Floor in Brooklyn. NYCCT has occupied this space since 2007 and their lease expires January 31, 2017. The college needs to continue to use this office and classroom space until June 30, 2018. Once the new academic building is completed and the building opens, anticipated December 2017, those functions can be relocated into vacant space on campus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let me first call, actually, I have to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, okay, great. Let me first call on Vice Chancellor Burdroom to explain why the resolution is needed, sorry, and then we will open the discussion. Forgive me. Go ahead, Jane.
Okay, I think you got a pretty good description. This is a good thing for CUNY. We're asking for a renewal for 17 months. The new academic building is going to open December 2017 or January 2018, and that facility, the classrooms and the faculty that's in there will either be in the new building or in another facility for New York City Tech. The difference in the lease costs, the lease costs are higher than what we were paying, and that's basically because the lease is only for 17 months and they're going to charge us more. But this is a, this is a good thing for CUNY because we're going to reduce our lease costs and move our, our staff and our classroom usage into the main building.
Any questions? Okay, we had a second.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I now move the second resolution entitled, "Baruch City College: College of Staten Island and Queens College: Upgrade of Fire Alarm Systems in Various Buildings." This will request the City University Construction Fund to execute a purchase order to design, purchase and install fire alarm systems in 21 different buildings under an existing New York State Office of General Services contract. This project will perform a comprehensive review of the 21 buildings. The upgrades will be carried out at Queens College, 13 buildings, Baruch, one building, City College, two buildings, and College of Staten Island, five buildings. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let me once again call on Vice Chancellor Burdroom to explain why the resolution is needed, and then we will open discussion.
This is a resolution for a contract to basically upgrade the fire alarm system. This is part of what we've been doing over the, let's say, the last, the last number of years. We're going and looking at every building in the CUNY portfolio, or say, in the past two or three years, we have looked at, yeah, looked at or in the process of looking at at least 120 buildings. So this is just part of a plan to basically upgrade the systems in all our buildings.
Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I, related to this, how many do we still have to go to upgrade?
Well, the-
Where are we, where are we in this process?
Okay, so we have approximately 300 buildings.
Okay.
We have looked at about 124, add another 22 to this, and we will basi-
We're not there.
You do this on an, you do this on an ongoing, ongoing syst-, you use an ongoing system. So that's what we're doing. So we're going to touch every single, we're going to look at every single building. The difference in this is that we put it under one contract, and lots of times before, we basically did one at a time. So this is kind of using our contracting ability. So we will be looking at every, every building in the system.
I'm very pleased that we're ahead of the curve on this and that, because given the age of the portfolio, could you describe the contracting process just briefly and how we know we're getting a good price on this?
Okay, this is a, this is an OGS contract. This is a contract from the state, and the state puts out contracts for all, all the government bodies within the state. And for this one, they put out a contract. This contract offers like 85 different services, and they basically bring in everyone that, for fire alarms. Fire alarms is just a little piece of what's in this contract. So they basically bring in, bring in every, almost every contractor that touches our buildings. Like, for instance, Siemens. So let's just say one of the building is Queens, Queens uses Siemens, we would like to use Siemens. But they recommend, then we do this, we go to more than one vendor to make sure that we're getting the, the best price. Remember, when, when the state puts out these contracts, they go through the public, the public bidding process. So this really gives us an array of vendors to go to.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, I'd like to have a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, motion carries. I now move the third resolution entitled, "Baruch College: Library and Technology Building: Student Computer Lab." This will request the City University Construction Fund to execute a construction contract for the renovation of the student computer lab on the sixth floor of the Library and Technology Building. The contract will be awarded by competitive sealed bid under CUCF guidelines for procurement contracts. The cost will be chargeable to New York State Capital Construction Fund at an amount not to exceed 1.7 million. The current lab needs to be expanded to meet the needs of the college. Adding 3,200 square feet will add 50 seats and address changes in how students study. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let me once again call on Vice Chancellor Burdroom to explain why the resolution is needed, and then we will open discussion.
Just in general, before, we're doing this all over CUNY because our libraries and our labs that are 20 years old don't function the way we need, we need them function. If you take, so if you take this specifically in Baruch College, we're going to basically create places to use computers, different, different types of furniture, small rooms and study rooms. Because if you think about 20 years ago, or 30 years ago when I was in college, that's not what the setup was. The setup was, everything was individual. So this is kind of changing with the times and how students function. And students function in groups, just like we all function in groups. So this is, this is just the small picture of what's going on across the campuses. And some of these, like libraries, it's a lot more than 1.7 million dollars and it's a lot more than 3,200 square feet. So this is a small one, but this is going to make a really big difference at Baruch. I mean, I could tell you a, a personal story. So I have a nephew that lives across the street from Baruch, and he uses the library at Baruch, and he called me up, this was about a year and a half ago, and he said, "What's with this library?" He said, "Where I went to school, you know, the furniture was modern and I could basically work with other students. I want to use this library. Like, you're in charge of this, like, what are you doing about it?" And that's about exactly the same time that Kathy came and said to us, "Look, we've got to change this." So it's really interesting, so we basically have to change with the times. So I'm, I'm going to try and, for meetings going forward, talk about different libraries, where we are doing this. And each one's different because each one's, each campus is different. So this is just a little tiny one of basically the whole picture.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
After you.
So to that end, how is it that it gets in a queue? I mean, is it by need? Is it by the president's request? How is it that we start going through the various campuses and looking at which of the libraries and which ones get in, in the queue and, and how do they move forward?
So when we're done with this, I'm going to do a overview of the capital plan and the cap, the process for the capital plan.
Good.
Will kind of give you that picture. First thing is, it's based on the amount of, just quickly, the amount of funding that we have, the school's priority, the school, it's, the planning of this is like a marriage between the central operation and the school. So it's, it's kind of the school's priority. Now, let's say four or five years ago, we looked at science labs, and that was a key thing, because that was a key thing for CUNY. So we basically went from campus to campus and decided to do labs. So sometimes we make the decision to do it and sometimes the campus, but I'm going to try and give you a picture of how this works in a few minutes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
My question is, are we able to determine how many students will be displaced as a result of this 10-month construction?
I'm sure we can basically tell you that, but for, I just have to say, when you do this, this, this is, this is the problem that CUNY has. The only way you can renovate is that you have to basically dislodge some students. Like, President Mello is basically having her library redone. The amount of students that are not going to get used to that library is pretty significant, but you kind of have to balance, you know, one against the other. So I would say we're displacing a lot of students, and if you, if you, well, you went to Baruch.
Right.
I was, I was, I was in the-
And LaGuardia.
What?
I went to both places.
I was in the Baruch library when we were looking at this during finals. There's not even space to sit on the floor. So we're taking away space for whatever number of months, and it's going to be a problem.
Just a follow-up.
Sure.
Has the college, what alternative has the college offered for the students now that this is going to be going on?
Is Kathy here?
I believe the new annex should be opening up too at some point soon, so that will at least open up a little bit of space. I don't know what the timing is.
But you know what, we'll, if you want to know, we'll get back to it. But I'm telling you, they can't ma-, this is a cross CUNY. When we renovate, you can't make up for what you're, you're renovating.
Can a library be open 24/7?
Baruch is actually one that does during finals, and it's-
But only during finals, yeah.
And it's so beneficial to our students.
I know, that, I, I will ask, that's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, that's like a funding question, but I'm just saying, because this is the facilities committee, whether it's the library, whether it's a classroom, we try very hard, and Baruch's going to go through a construction week of 17 lets that's going to really impact the school, but what's our choice? Especially a place like Baruch in LaGuardia. So, do you have anything?
Any, any other questions or concerns, comments? Okay. Let's bring this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. I now move the fourth resolution entitled, "Burrow Manhattan Community College, 199 Chambers Street: New Windows, New Window Installation." This will request the City University Construction Fund to execute a contract for BMCC for the installation of new windows on the second floor of 199 Chambers Street. The contract shall be funded with 50% city and 50% state funds under a DAS-NY project for an amount not to exceed $800,000. The west facade of 199 Chambers Street was not originally intended to have windows while the West Side Highway was elevated. Removal of the highway will allow for new windows to bring light into the spaces, making them more useful for offices and student services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Let me once again call on Judy to explain why the resolution is needed, and then we will open discussion.
If you look over CUNY's portfolio, you can find buildings that were built in the 70s where, I guess, everything was inwarded, where the buildings had no, they don't have windows, where they have windows at the ceiling level. I know of one building that, it has my, it has my father's name on it, and it won this award, it was named after him in the 70s. It won this great, it won like three different awards, and the, and the windows are at the ceiling. It's like pitch black, and that was the time. And you have, you have, you have, York has a building like that, City College has a building like that, and that's also kind of the way prison, when prisons were built at the same time. So adding light for a building, especially now because everything's glass, is basically kind of what we need to do. And your question, the school really wanted to do this. So that, this comes, this request comes from the school. It's a small, it's not that large an area, because if you, if you think about riding now on the West Side Highway and you ride past the building, there's quite a few, there's quite a few windows. But this is to add windows and to add light into those classrooms. So that's kind of the, the rationale.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. I'd like to have a vote on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have one informational, I will now call upon Vice Chancellor Burdroom for her report on the capital budget process for the upcoming year.
Okay, we have, there are people on this committee that have been on this committee for many years, and there were new people. So the budget process usually, we usually do this sometime in the end of October, and the board votes on it in November. This year, the chancellor wanted to have more time to discuss what the capital needs were, and wanted to have more time to discuss this with OMB and DOB, because he believed that if the board votes at the end of November, and that the state of the state is January 1st, we don't get much time. So we now are basically at the place we would be in October. And what I usually do for the new pe-, the new, the new board members, I come on one day and I go through basically what the need is, which I'm going to show you. The need is astronomical. So there really wasn't enough, there wasn't enough time to go through that. So, and the chancellor wants the board to have a broader picture. So we've kind of, I'm kind of going to break this up into two parts. Part, I'm probably the luckiest of vice chancellor because I get to show pictures. Everybody else shows words and numbers and whatever, so I, so I tried to break this up into two parts. This is the first part, and the second part, which will be in October, will be more associated with the numbers and how the whole thing gets put together. So I'm going to go through it, I know it's late, I'm going to try and basically go through it quickly so that you get the broad picture, so that when I come in next, next month, you'll have more of an understanding, instead of you sitting here for one hour, like, after, you know, after 20 minutes, your eyes are crossing. So, okay, so I'm going to try, and you know what, if anyone has a question, if I don't get through the whole thing, I'll reconstruct it for the next time. Stop me, like, don't, I don't have to, you know, just keep talking. Okay, so this is, I want to get to the first, okay, so this is, and, and if it gets, if it's too much, just stop me and say it's too much. Right? President Mello, you'll tell me, okay?
I will tell them.
You will tell me, okay?
I promise, Vice Chancellor.
Okay, so this is what I wanted to go through. The capital budget, the projects that we've completed, the highlight of things that we're working on, and then what our need is, all right? In kind of like broad strokes. Okay, so this is, you know, our mission is to provide facilities that support student success. Just for, I guess, the new board members, the majority of the funding is from New York State. Senior colleges is 100% funded by the state, community college is 50% by the state and 50% basically by the city. The city funds a 50% funding for community colleges. The important piece here is, this is like the key piece, when the city budget comes out in June and they fund something for LaGuardia, and they fund half of the cost, let's say her library is 10 million, the city gives us five, the state matches it, we have to wait till the following state budget to get the other five to do her library. Now, if she needed 20 million and the city gave five, and then the state gave us five, and then the city gave us five, we're waiting two years for her library. So when you go to the campuses, especially the community colleges, and you hear, "It takes forever," this is one of the reasons it takes forever. Okay, so there's some private funding, all right? So this is, this is what we have right now, okay? We have $3 billion in available, available state and city re-appropriations to advance these project, projects. Now, if you just picture my example of what I just described, that's only a $20 million need. When we have buildings that need 200 million and it takes five years, you can just imagine how this basically builds up. Now, our spending cap is about 475 million a year, and that's determined by the state and that's determined by the state's debt limit. And I'm going to go into this, if you have questions about this, I'm going to go into this the next time. Now, we have funding to advance many projects. However, many of our new planned buildings are in design, we don't have enough money, and unfortunately, the state's ability to sell more debt is really limited. Okay, so here's the fun part. This is completed projects. This is a, this is Queensborough Community College. We built a new cafeteria by roofing over the courtyard. This, this area was just had a lot of grass in it and a tree in it, in the middle, and with the school, we decided, this is like reuse of space, you're going to have to be creative. This is going to be opened on Monday, and when we get enough money, we're going to basically close the other side and we're going to build a kitchen. So we got enough funding, we created something, and this is kind of how we basically do projects. But this is really, I'm really impressed with this, because when you see what it looked like before and what it looks like now, it's given the school something and it's pretty creative. This, okay, this, if, this is the Bronx, this is the Quad project, okay? We, what we did, we started this six years ago, the infrastructure at Bronx Community College, which used to be NYU, no, no one touched the infrastructure for, Bob, how long? 20 years?
Six years.
We have spent $100 million on the infrastructure, and how did we basically take care of the infrastructure? This area that you see was totally dug up and surrounded by a fence for, I don't know, five or six years. So we call it the Quad, the Quad project, and we put grass and whatever, we gave the campus back its quad, and this is like the key to the campus. So this is really very, very significant. I think I put in, yeah, I put in two pictures, one at night. And we're going to, I have a picture later that shows you what it looked like before we did any of the, any of the infrastructure. And go back, go back. The other part of this is, when you do infrastructure and elected officials give you money, they can't see what they give you money for. So it's really difficult to get funding for this, but I have to say, between the city and the state, you know, we got $100 million and we basically need more. How am I doing? Okay. This is the new Graduate School of Public Health. What we did here was, there were 26,000 square feet last year, and we increased that to 29,000 square feet. This year, the cost was about $7 million, and it basically just opened. And it's on 125th Street. Okay, now, this is, this is the school that we were talking about, New York City Tech, and in the corner is the rendering, and right below is exactly what the building looks like. This is going to have classrooms, labs, a nursing simulation center, an auditorium. The cost of this is 410 million. So you can imagine how long it took us to basically get 410 million. It took quite a few years, but this building is going to open either the end of 2017 or 2018, and it's really going to help the, the campus. Okay, this is, I love when I, you get to, there's a rendering, there's actually a picture of what it looks like. This is the Tao Performing Arts Center. This is almost done. We basically have another, I don't know, six months, and this will be opening. This is going to have performance-based teaching studios, recording studios, and we'll invite everyone here to the opening. Okay, now, this is my favorite project. Do you want to talk about this?
This is in a, a building that's a 900,000-square-foot building. It's about 100 years old. It's the old Sunshine Biscuit Baking Company in Long Island City, Queens, and the terracotta on the 100-year-old building was falling off. Falling off terracotta for a nine-story building can be problematic. This is a little over $100 million project where we are now sort of in phase, I would say, 2.1, where we have taken off two sides of the terracotta. We will replace it with a brand-new curtain wall, which actually is also made of terracotta, so they're hanging the stuff with windows that are embedded. It will, it's not only health and safety, it'll dramatically update and improve the buildings. You can see it from the Koch Bridge, and it will also have energy implications since the windows are going to be much more energy efficient, and we can't wait.
Now, the, one of the issues is, you have to take care of the facade before you basically take care of what's inside, and President Mello's right, this is a really large building, this is like the size of Macy's, and she needs space, but the cost of renovating this is very high, and what we do is, we do a little piece at a time, because to fund, to basically renovate this whole building, you know, the city nor the state, nor any state basically, you know, afford it. But the growth potential here is great, and I would say we have, we have three floors with, you have something on the first floor, right?
Oh, no, we, of, of the nine stories, we have about five and a half that have been renovated.
So, so it takes time, but we're getting there. Okay, now, I'm going to go, I'm going to go really quickly because I want to basically get to the end. CUNY 2020 Program, that is a state program, that's the governor's program. It basically is a competition between the schools for money to- It basically is a competition between the schools for money to promote economic development. We got a fifty-five, it comes in fifty-five million dollar packages. We've had, we've gotten fifty-five million, we're in the process of, it's a real competition. We're in the process of waiting for the award for the second, and we basically have two more. So if you add this up, when, how much money do we have sitting?
We have two hundred and ten.
Two hundred and ten, okay. Now, when I tell you that we got a hundred and forty-two million last year in critical maintenance, this is tremendous amount of money. Now, the only, if you basically look at round one, it says two million to fifteen million. They'll, this, they'll only fund smaller projects. But this is really significant now for CUNY because we're not getting that much money. So this is kind of where the funding is. And at one project, which has to do with Jamaica Bay, we're buying a boat. And the boat actually, we're actually going to get the boat in like the next five months. So there's all, there's all different awards here and at some point in time, I'll go through. But this is a significant piece for CUNY. Okay, so now I've gotten to the five-year capital budget need. Everybody?
Can I ask you a question about that, to go back to that? So is that capital or is that capital attached to some kind of program around economic development?
Okay, there's, you have to, it's a competition.
Right.
And you have, basically, there has to be something that is economic development. It has to be workforce development, it has to be a synergy with the school. And if you use twenty twenty combined with startup, which I'll go into another time.
Right.
So there's all these categories, this, the, they get rated, the committee is made up of, of half the people from CUNY and half the people from ESD. The chair of the committee is basically the undersecretary of education for the governor. That's kind of what, and it's all capital money. It's nothing else, it's all capital.
So it's not the program part of it?
No.
It won't fund the initiatives?
No, absolutely not.
All right.
It's, if you have the initiatives, you know, at some point I will, if you, and if you want to know, I'll go through, you know, with the awards. Okay.
I'll take up.
So here are, here's the two categories that we get funding for, preserving our assets, which is critical maintenance, and providing facilities, which is reusing existing buildings. And I kind of showed you some examples. And expansion through new construction. Going to try. Okay, so the issues that shape the capital program are the age of CUNY's facilities and the history of deferred maintenance, which means that, this is all over higher education. Nobody's done, nobody's invested in our assets. And you don't, if you have a house and you don't basically replace your boiler, you freeze. So this gives you a picture of how old our buildings are, and the first one is the buildings that are over fifty years. You can see the situation that we're in. We did a, a critical maintenance study in two thousand and seven, we updated it in two thousand and twelve, and we have a backlog of two point five billion, which I have to say, it, there's a backlog in the state of New York, in bridges, there's a backlog in everything, we're not alone. So you basically have to put this in the, in the context. It sounds like a lot, we've been getting money, little bit by little, but we're going to basically make repairs and changes. Okay, the priorities for the five-year capital plan, this was voted on by the board. I'm not going to go through this, I just wanted you to basically get a picture of this. Next one. Did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I'll have you go back to that earlier slide.
Which slide?
Go back.
The priorities.
This one.
The priorities?
Yeah, they're right there.
This one?
Yeah. Dot point number one, inform master plans and studies. Those are by, those are by each of the colleges, universities.
Actually, I, okay, this is the answer to your question. We have master plans for, for each school, some are older than others. We sometimes do smaller master plans, and this is where the need comes from, comes from what the master plan is. And most new buildings, CUNY's gotten in the last ten years, nine new buildings, come from master plan, okay? Now, the way we establish this is with collaboration between us and the schools, and President Mello will describe to you what's that like. We meet with every college and we review everything. This process of review takes six months. We start after the budget process. So it's long and it's really like a marriage. And her library is being redone because she decided that her library is one of her priorities. Now, the need is so great that it could be something else first. Now, I personally want to spend money on infrastructure like boilers and windows and whatever, so there's kind of a balance, because the buildings has to run, but we have to provide for the students, so. Yes?
How are you tying your projections of the master plans into enrollment projections? What's the process for doing that? Because obviously, we're seeing changes in the distribution of majors and that's going to get into changes in the distribution of space. Nobody can predict the future, but, you know, but we can see where that's going, so.
Okay, the master plan process starts with enrollment projections, that is the first step. And that's done with David Crook and whatever. We don't start any master plan without the, without the projection. I mean, at some point, going forward, I can have, she's not here today, the person who basically does the planning come and explain this. Okay, so here is, this is about what the five-year need is going to be, it's six point eight. I didn't, did you bring a book?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we basically, we take the need, the whole need, and we basically put it together and we print one of these books every year. You got the people that have been here, the, you know, and every, every year, there's a different school on the, on the cover. It used to be, it used to be the renderings for new buildings. Since we're not getting so many new buildings, this is basically a picture of something, of Medgar Evers, their library. So we basically print this and if you, and I'm sorry, you guys have gone, basically gone through this, and I'm going to give this to you. This shows you what, between essential operation and the school, what the priorities are. It's in here for every school. There's a description of each project and it's prioritized. So it's kind of a back and forth, but you can take a look and if you have other questions, you.
And it covers the five-year period?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the five, the first year need is one point seven, and the elected officials get, official request is ninety-five million. We're not going to get ninety-five million. So these, this is, this is the highlights, the critical maintenance. This is, at this point, the most important thing for CUNY because of the age of our facility. And we kind of, we, this is new, by the way. This piece for everybody is new. We kind of decided that we have to frame this a little bit differently. And we're framing it, two categories for critical maintenance, preserve what we have and life safety. And the second is, support the academic mission of CUNY. And that is libraries, the, the, the resolution that we just had here for computer, the computer areas, that's what that is. And the strategic initiatives, definition of that is new buildings. Okay. This is, now, this describes critical maintenance a little bit. Now, I'm asking you, do you want me to, I can do this next time, do you want me to keep going? What?
Maybe we'll continue it next time, because we're running late. Does anyone disagree with that?
No, I don't, except do us a favor, is going to wrap this up, just tell us what those facilities are.
Well, actually, maybe, how long will it take to get through the critical maintenance and then maybe the rest of it can get done, if it's going to be a long time?
Well, the, see, the reason I stopped the critical maintenance, because this is the, this is kind of the heart of.
Okay.
This is the heart of, heart of it, so I, if you don't mind, if you want to, if you want to wait, I'll basically start here. Because the reality is, this is what we're going to get funded for, we're not going to get funded for new buildings. Though at the end of this, I have a new building, so if you don't mind, I'd like to wait and start this next time. Is that?
It's fine.
Yes.
Now, one, one more. For the, for the trustees that have been here and you've seen this, is there something that you want to know that you were never told?
What a question.
I wouldn't know.
One thing you're for next time, apart, is.
I guess I shouldn't have asked that.
Okay. It doesn't have to be answered this session, but what, but what are we doing for the capital plan to refinance, given the low interest rate environment? And you do not have to answer that today, but that's, that's sort of an important issue, especially given the limits on the state's debt.
Okay, I'll take, I'll write this trustee shorter, which.
No, I, actually, it piggybacks on Jay, and you probably have told me, but because of the age factor.
Of the building.
I'm sorry?
Of the building.
I wish that were so. In your capital document, which I basically memorized, as well as in what I think, oh, I've seen in the strategic plan, et cetera, related to this is public-private partnerships. There's even a paragraph on that, which I think ties in with Jay's. What would be helpful to know is, not now, but next time, how many projects are in the hopper that have the potential for public-private partnerships? And to what extent must or should the state be involved in those? Those are my two questions.
Well, okay.
No, you don't have to answer it now, because I think it's a little bit more of a quick answer.
The discussion that you're asking for is, it would take, I think, a home meeting, so what I would like to do is wait until we do this piece and then.
Oh, absolutely.
And the reason I asked that question, I know you, I know everyone laughed, but the chancellor wants trustees to have information that they think is important, as opposed to just what I think is important. So that's why I asked this, asked this question.
Which one, whether we think it's important or you?
No, they ask you, is there something that you haven't heard, like, that you'd like to know?
And I'm, and I'm, I'm being very honest.
I know.
You may have told us this, but I think it's something the trustees ought to know, particularly since it's in the capital plan, it's also in the strategic plan that's coming up, in real estate, in facilities. And I think it ties in with Jay's question, not only on interest rates, but other opportunities there may have, other than state, anyway.
Okay.
That's where I'm coming from.
So the other question that I would add to that, a friendly amendment to that question about public-private partnerships, is also tying that to major grants or gifts, right? What's the tie to that?
In what way, I'm sorry, what are you thinking?
Naming rights, you know, another, public-private partnerships in a grander scale and, you know, major gifts and donations, pledges, hopefully no pledges, but mostly gifts.
Yeah, your, that, your question is a good question, but I'm not sure, but I will, I'm not sure that that, that goes to me, but it's still a question.
It doesn't go to you, but there's a loop to it, to talk about public-private partnerships.
They say more than, than you.
Okay.
Okay, is there any more business before the committee? This meeting is now adjourned.
Don't want to move for that? Okay.